refrain from asking questions until staff presentations are complete. So we're at 3.1 council where we serve an update on the proposed amendments to the city of Goodyear zoning ordinances, ordinance and residential districts and development standards. Before us, we have planning manager Katie Wilkin and planner Alex Letensky to present. Hello ladies.
Thank you mayor, members of council. As you stated, the reason we're here tonight is we've been working on an update to the residential standards in our zoning ordinance. The reason we're doing this is you might have noticed there's been a lot of PED amendments recently to go to different lot product. And the only way we have to do that currently is to do PED amendments. And in fact, out of our last 37 rezonings, 34 of them were PEDs. It's very expensive for our customers to create PED regulations. They're very difficult to understand, both from staff and from home builder's standpoint. It's a very lengthy process. In fact, as a visual, here's the PED book for Estrella. This doesn't even include Montecito or Cana Mia. It's just a small portion of Estrella. And so when we get a new home builder coming in, we have to go through this whole book trying to figure out if what they want to do can be done. So that's what prompted us to start looking at our regulations. So of course, we look to our vision and mission statement for the development services departments. And we know we want to deliver outstanding customer service, which part of that is the council strategic action plan goal of streamlining the development review process. And we, by changing this, we're going to be responding to these evolving market demands. But the other thing we noticed here is initiate collaborative solutions and value customer partnerships. So as you move for, as we move forward, I hope you see, we really took the opportunity to actually work collaboratively with our customers and find out what they really needed. So tonight's presentation, I want to talk to you a little bit about what we learned is happening in the market, what we propose our strategy be moving forward. We have some examples to show you what's being built out there and what we think can be built in Goodyear. And then go through what we would propose the regulations to be. So when we reached out to our customers, one of the biggest customer we have is Newland in Estrella. Over the last year or two, half of the preliminary plots and final plots have been submitted by Newland communities. So they are our largest customer. They probably are the single largest customer that's before the city council even. So it's really important for us to sit down with them. And it was really great because when we started talking to them about this project, they said, hey, why don't we hook you up with our brokerage firms Nate Nathans and Associates? And we can really have a great conversation about what's going on. And this was really a great opportunity for staff because a lot of times we hear Nate Nathans talk at conferences or sessions or to city council, and we don't have a chance to really dig deep with them and ask them questions on why, what's going on, what can we do to help? So Pete and Bill Olson from Newland Communities were there. Nate Nathans and some of his partners sat down with us for an hour and a half, two hours, and shared a lot of great information with us. As already said, they're our largest customer and they want to increase. The bottom line of what they shared with us is it really comes down to the innovative communities are focusing on three things. The cost of the home and land size is one of the easiest ways to control cost. And really what's driving that is the FHA loan limit of $270,000. Once they hit that, you know, they really lose having more customers to be able to sell a home to. And that 270,000 is getting more challenging to remain under when you say, especially in a developing community like Goodyear where there's so much infrastructure cost associated with development. The second most important thing is providing community amenities. And then finally focusing on the streetscape. So we have some examples of that later on, but I did want to talk a little bit about some of these examples that are in front of you. They shared with us some of the master plan communities around the, around the valley. One of them is Cadence in Eastmark. That's the one that's by the Mesa Gateway Airport, the old proving grounds that's doing really well. They're doing a lot of 43-foot wide lot product, 48-foot wide lot product. Most of their product has five and five-foot setbacks. They have a lot of, you know, what we might call conventional product, but they are also seeing a lot of alley-loaded product now, court home, green, green court, which again, I'll show you some examples of these. The other one that we can see is to the north is Vistancia and Marley Park. Now Vistancia has mostly more conventional product. They are seeing smaller products, some 45s, 50s, but they, they don't have a lot of alley-loaded product, court home type product. Marley Park, that's an age restricted community and they have a balance between the conventional. They don't have a ton of like alley-loaded and court home product, but they're starting to see it. Verrato, as you know, started with an amazing success story, which you probably know was heavily subsidized by the developer. Getting that main street and those amenities in on day one just took a huge financial commitment that we are not likely to see repeated elsewhere. In 2012, after the market started recovering, they basically did a reset in their community and started bringing in more conventional product more. But with some of these smaller lots, they're seeing 43s, 45s, 48s as well, which have been really successful. So when Nate Nathans, Nate Nathans was talking to us, he really was telling us a story that the market in Goodyear isn't ready for unique product. If we call unique product alley-loaded, certain types of court home product, you know, just, just because the expense isn't there. And really what it comes down to is home builders aren't taking risks. A home builder's not going to come into Goodyear for the first time and build an alley-loaded product or build some amazing, unique type community. However, they will come and build conventional lots because the West Valley is still growing a lot and Goodyear especially is a very enticing market. So this is our opportunity to entice home builders to our community and build a strong relationship with them. What we also heard from him is, from Nate Nathans, is that the key is the speed and friendliness of our process. And when they say friendliness, they don't mean that we're not being happy and polite to our customers. They mean that, you know, it's understandable. Somebody can come in and just kind of get, okay, I can kind of predict the process. The other way they put it is the process needs to be predictable and flexible. And PEDs are not predictable and flexible because they take a lot of interpretation. We often have Newland communities coming to us and saying, hey, this thing that was written in 1980, whatever, what do you think this means? And it's like, I'm not sure. What do you think it means? And we're working together. You know, again, because a, a land developer like Newland has this book and it's kind of going to the home builder saying, hey, I want to sell you this piece of land and here's the regulations that go along with it. So we're trying to work with our customers and make it, hey, here's some really easy to understand regulations that are flexible but predictable and ensure quality, but giving you some wiggle room in how you achieve that quality. And I, I'm focusing on Newland a lot because they are our largest customers and some of our talks focused around Newland. But what we learned from Nate Nathans is really what they were sharing with us applies to our whole community. And these lessons really apply everywhere that we expect Goodyear to grow. So I don't mean to say this is only for lessons we learned about Newland. The other interesting story I have to share with you about the market isn't ready for unique product is even, you know, we're, we're so excited because Fulton is going to be building at Estrella Commons. And when they first started coming, talking to us, I know Fulton builds in Agrotopia. And some of the product they're going to be building is the same exact product that they're building in Agrotopia in some of these areas. And I noticed that they weren't using the same color palette. So I just asked them, hey, what, you know, would you consider using that color palette that has the yellow homes and the blue homes? And it was so interesting because they were even kind of, I kind of scared them a little, made them a little nervous because they were like, oh my gosh, are you going to require us to do this? And I was like, no, I'm just, I'm just talking, you know, brainstorming with you. And, and even the color, they just, they said they felt that the Goodyear market is too conservative to get wild with color. Let me assure you, they do have a cool color palette. It is unique than other things we've seen. So they are pushing the envelope, but they were nervous to even, you know, something is what I would think is simple is pink color. They were just like, no, those, those, those yellow and blue homes can scare off buyers and, and maybe in our next product. So, so that's where the home builders are at today, you know? They're, they're just, like I said, I mean, risk averse is just the way to put it, with good reason. Some of it's their financing that causes them to be that way. But it's great because again, in building relationships, now that we're talking to Fulton Moore, they're working with us on, hey, help us brainstorm how to work with you and get these cool things. So it's, it's, it's really fun and exciting. And they were also really excited about the turnaround times we were able to tell them about when we told them that we, we thought we'd be able to get their preliminary plat reviewed in about 10 days. They almost fell off their chair because they said one of the community, they wouldn't tell me who it was, but one of the communities they were at, it was seven weeks that they had just reviewed a preliminary plat.
You said 10 days.
Yes. So two weeks versus seven. So they were very, very excited. So those, and those plans are in right now. So we're meeting those timeframes that we had told them about. So again, so what we asked Nate Nathans is, all right, so what can we do? How, how do we get this unique product? We don't just want to sit and wait. We want to be proactive and encourage different type of development here in Goodyear. And he said, okay, well, here's what you do. Allow the conventional product. Ensure your process is friendly and predictable. And that will build this relationship with the home builders and allow them to build the relationship with the market here in Goodyear. And then comes the unique product. And Nate said, the reason I know this is because this is what Eastmark did and Agrotopia did and Cooley Station did. And there's so many successful examples throughout the valley and this is how they did it. This is how it works. Some of those East Valley cities, I know we just get sick of hearing about it, but they're just so much bigger than us. They're just at a different place in the market. So we said, okay, great. That sounds like a fantastic strategy. We will do that. We're going to figure out how to allow for flexibility in home design while still ensuring quality. And we're going to ensure our process is friendly and predictable. So let me tell you what our thoughts are on that. First on the home design. Again, just a overview on the process. First, they go through a zoning and that could be PED or straight rezoning. And, you know, you're very familiar with that process that comes before you. It's a public process. Then they go through their preliminary plating, which also comes to city council, but it's not advertised, it's not notices and sent out to neighbors, but it is a public process. Then they go through their final plat and civils. And then it's not till the fourth step that they actually do the home design review, which is internal. And then they're able to submit their building plans. And then they do the construction and while construction's going on, the inspections are happening and then they get the final on the home. So you can see why the home builders are kind of like, I don't know what you're, if I have to start at rezoning or start at preliminary plat, I don't even know if you're going to let me build the houses I want to build till step four and five. And what we're hearing too, is that home builders are now not closing on land until they get the product approval. So that makes a big impact to the land developers that they're not getting that closing on the land until they get that product design. So we don't have every, everything fixed and, and worked out yet, but that's something we're trying to do. How do we give the home builders some of that level of comfort that we're not going to surprise them at the last minute, but still again, kind of, you know, there's a reason the process was set up this way. How do we kind of work with the process, but get the home builders what they need as well? Just kind of quickly touching, some of the things we're seeing in the other communities too, is again, as I already kind of mentioned, and this is kind of the theme, there's really a focus on the streetscape of the home and the amenities and the community and not so much the individual houses. You can see, I mean, some of these communities are communities we would love to have build here in Goodyear. And, you know, the Agrotopia picture in the lower left, you can see it's five two-story homes in a row. There's no restriction on two stories. There's not a lot of stone on the houses. There's a focus on the streetscape facade, but not necessarily wrapping around all four sides of the home. They're spend, you know, using the dollars where they count on the streetscape. There are a lot of trees. There is a focus on open space. There is a focus on front porches, but not a lot of the bells and whistles on the house. But they still look like, these are the communities we want to emulate and this is what they're doing. So when we're looking at those other communities, we saw that it really did come down to these three things. Amenities, providing connectivity and the streetscape. So that's how we're focusing our, our regulations. So let me go through those. The first is amenities. And you know, there's, again, there's been a shift here too. You know, in the past, there'd be large master plan communities. They'd build some really big residence center, sometimes a golf course, restaurants. And while there still are those communities that are doing it, such as Newland, and the picture in the lower side of this is actually the proposed Casa Lucero in Newland. So we're still seeing some really cool building. There's also a lot of even master plan communities that are just building a pool with maybe a small pool house that just has restrooms and changing areas and that's it. You can even see in Agrotopia, they have Joe's Farm Grill. So it's commercial. It's really a cool gathering place and amenity, just this integrated commercial. And then the top left is in Eastmark and it's just a playground. It's just a playground that they painted cool and gave it a cool name. And, and so it, it doesn't necessarily have to be this expensive stuff. It's just getting funky and quirky and, and just trying to do anything you can to make your neighborhood unique. So on connectivity, we already have a lot of good regulations on this in Goodyear. We have a lot of good trails. We also want to focus on too, you know, growing next to areas that have already grown because, you know, when we talk about connectivity, we also talk about connection to amenities, to services, to grocery stores. But of course, it's also part of the recreation component of being able to move freely, having access to freeways, transit, hopefully as we continue to develop. So, you know, we're, we're, we're seeing those communities that are most successful have a lot of connectivity, not just with trails, but also with, you know, adjacency to freeways, adjacency to transit and adjacency to already developed areas. And then finally, this is kind of the bread and butter is the streetscape. So this is a conventional product in Eastmark. It's a 70-foot wide lot. And you can see the homes are really close to the street. These are probably about 18 to 20 feet from the street, but they have that landscape buffer with the trees out front to provide additional space. There is enhanced architecture, but it's pretty much just in the front. They do use a lot of courtyard design. And when we go down to a 50-foot wide lot product in the same neighborhood, it's not too different. You could see these homes are even closer. The living space is only about 10 feet away. But because they have that larger landscape buffer with the detached sidewalk, it almost looks like the front yard and it gives that feeling of being a little farther away. They used pavers on this one to try and break up, since there's so many driveway cuts, to kind of break up the look of the concrete. And again, there's porches, courtyards to help bring that living space out front. Then we can see other types of product. This is actually in Palm Valley, a court home product. And there are several court home products in Goodyear selling very well. There's less focus on the side yards. It's a court home because they have a single driveway with four to six units off that single driveway. There's a huge focus on amenities and open space because there's much less private open space in these kind of developments. You can see this one has shared parking. They only have a sidewalk on one side of the street, so they're trying to do different things with the street. Because if you look at it, you can see there's parking, there's little parking bump outs on the other side of the street. So they only had the sidewalk on the one side of the street. So that's a different product we've already seen in Goodyear. There's also, I should, there's also something that's sometimes called a green court, sometimes called a court home. And that's where it's, it's similar to this where there's a shared driveway, but then there's some kind of green open space in between the homes rather than the homes backing up to each other. We've seen it called an aurorio, a green court, a court home. So our proposed update, basically what we're proposing is adding three new districts. An attached district, which would allow for row homes or triplex type units. We do have another zoning in process right now where they're doing triplex types units. Palm Valley near the golf course, they had to write a PED to allow that type of product because we don't allow it in the zoning ordinance now. One that would allow those court homes, either whether it be green court or a motor court type home. And then what we call a conventional or traditional 50-foot wide lot. And in this PowerPoint, we had it at 50-foot wide, but we're looking now at going to 45 because now that we've learned more about what these other master plan communities are doing, it seems really standard that a lot of these are doing 47, 48-foot wide lots and that's what people need. Most of the product out there is about 35-foot wide lot. So with a five and five setback, a 45-foot wide lot is, is very doable. Then we're also, since we were looking at taking that one down to a 45, we're looking at the R16 category and reducing that from 60-foot wa, 60-foot wide to 55-foot wide. Because again, that's where if you, the way the housing product, there's 35-foot wide housing product, then there's 45-foot wide housing product. So 45-foot wide housing product would work on a 50-foot five, sorry, I'm just having trouble with all these numbers, 55-foot wide lot. So that's actually meeting the needs a little bit more than the 60-foot wide lot. So it would be adding three new districts and then modifying the R16 district is what we're looking at now. Already our regulations, we require open space. Depending on the size of the lot, it's 15%, 10% or 5% open space. The smaller the lot, the more open space you have to provide. We have the parks and recreation master plan, which requires for most subdivisions, a five acre park. Some of the smaller ones don't have to provide a park that large. That also gives guidance to what kind of amenity should be in those parks. We have already regulations about connectivity. In West Goodyear, there's a big trail system that they've been connecting to. So we already have those regulations. And then of course, we have the design guidelines that really focuses on the housing design. What we're proposing on top of that for these new districts, as well as that R16, since we'd be modifying it, is, and this is something that Mesa did and they've been really happy with how it's been working and the customers seem to be happy too, is kind of providing a menu of options to provide that flexibility. And then they would choose from that menu to show that they're meeting that. So in the connectivity, we'd recommend that, one, it has to be within a growth area, which our general plan says what the growth areas are. It has to have some type of higher trail system connections than what's normally required. And then maybe they would do something like limited subdivision perimeter walls. This isn't necessarily an exhaustive list. I'm just trying to give the highlights. And then they would have to conform to at least two of those things. So they don't have to do every single one. It gives them flexibility and choosing, but those seem to be the community characteristics that show good connectivity. With amenities, they might have to, they could provide additional park space. They could do something cool like integrated commercial, like that Joe's Farm Fresh. Or they could do something, you know, with the same amount of park space they have, but provide some enhanced amenity like a pool and recreation center. And so if they did one of those things, they'd be showing that there's greater amenities. And then finally, on the streetscape, I mean, we do want to put in those options of alley-loaded, deep recessed homes. We know that, you know, we're hearing from like Nate Nathans that the market's not ready for that, but we want to make sure those are covered in the zoning ordinance. But they could also do things like providing those detached sidewalks and I would, making sure the detached sidewalk is wide enough for the survivability of a tree. We may have done some detached sidewalks in the past where we didn't think about tree survivability and overhang into the street. So there's ways to do it better than we've done in some past neighborhoods. And then of course, porches and courtyards. So again, this is just trying to provide so it's flexible. We're not saying exactly how you have to do it, but we're giving a menu of options so that you can show us that you have connectivity, you're providing those amenities and you're focusing on streetscape. The other thing we're looking at is we know that as soon as we write something, the next day, somebody's going to come in asking for something different. We're going to write it as 45 and someone's going to walk in the door and say, I need 44 and a half. So what we want to do is the 50, the 45-foot wide lot and the 55-foot wide lot, that they could be eligible to up to an additional five feet with, with reduction if they provide even more amenities. So that last slide where we say you have to provide at least one, it might become, provide one extra one, and then you can be eligible for up to a five-foot lot reduction. The other thing we're looking at is with all of the residential districts, if they provide enhanced amenities, we would revise some of our residential design review standards. And what that means is, one, if they provide the correct community enhancements, what I went through, we would allow two-story homes throughout their community. We would revise our standards on elevation, so we would focus on the streetscape focus, or actually, that second bullet is talking about, right now, we have regulations that say, one elevation can't be next to the same elevation or cross the street from the same elevation. And they have to mix it up a certain way. So basically, that does just create, it just makes it complicated. So if you provide certain community characteristics, then we would back off those elevation restrictions. Focus the architecture on the streetscape side of the home only. And also, we're not exactly sure how we're going to do this, but there's got to be a way, but accept previously approved design review. So if someone's been through our design review process, they got homes approved, how can we just say, yep, you're doing that same stuff to give the home builder certainty that yes, you're doing what we want. Let's get you through the process quickly. We've already looked at it. You, you, you built it in Estrella, so it's fine to build it in West Goodyear. Right now, our processes don't allow that. So we want to figure out how to give home builders that certainty to keep, you know, if you're building good product, keep, keep building it. So again, they would only be allowed, we wouldn't do a blanket change for all these regulations for any community. They would need to meet certain requirements. So finally then, looking at our process is friendly and predictable. Back to that process slide, really the zoning is about creating regulations and that's where it's challenging, you know, when we do a PED, I don't think I stated this, but it takes six months to get a three PED through the process and it's taken us about three months to get a straight rezone. So it's half the time. Another reason we want people to do straight rezones, so we can just get them through. Then pre-plat's basically site planning where we're checking that they're meeting their site plan or plat meets those regulations. The final plat gets into detailed engineering and then the legal establishment of the community. And then again, it's not till step four that we're doing a design review of the homes and not till step five that we're doing the building review of the homes. So we don't have all the, everything figured out yet, but again, we're trying to figure out, you know, can the home design be done during zoning? If that's what someone wants to do so they can do it? I mean, that, we've actually been telling people now, if you want to do that, please do it. We'd be happy to do the design review. But sometimes there's risk there. So again, we're just working with our customers to figure out how to move this process around so that they can, they can meet their needs while we're still ensuring quality. We're looking at ways to streamline. Even in our zoning ordinance, currently there's about 29 pages of regulation. A lot of it's duplicate, a lot of it's just repeating information. And we think we're going to get that to about 12 or 15, maybe a few pages more through use of charts, taking out the repetitive nature. So again, even our regulations are a lot easier to understand. It's clear. We were looking, there's still, even though we've updated the design guidelines a few times, there's still some repetitiveness between the zoning ordinance subregs and the design guidelines. So we're looking at ways to, you know, the design guidelines are about 25 pages. We think we can even reduce that by quite a bit by just taking out some of the repetitive nature because some things are still in the zoning ordinance and the design guidelines. And then of course, we're still looking at process improvements. How do we keep improving this process for the customers? So just to summarize, what we're hearing, what Nate Nathans told us that was really the silver lining is we can attract unique development. We just need to work on our processes and build relationships, but it does take time. We do need to allow those conventional lot product. Giving our customers flexibility and predictability is key. And we can, we can always require high quality development. There's no reason to, you know, allow lesser quality. It's just changing what the focus is. So again, going back to our mission, we just wanted to reiterate, we do think we're hitting on every step of this. We're truly collaborating with our customers. We're empowering, I should have said, Alex is sitting here. She's really been doing all the work. I'm the one talking, but she's been doing all the research, setting up the meetings, writing the regulations. And we never stop learning. We know, we know we don't know everything. We've got to talk to everyone else and find out what we need to do. So I wanted to wrap it up. I mean, obviously, we want to hear anything that you want to discuss, but we really want to know, one, was there any questions about what we've heard from Nate Nathans on our place in the market? Is there a concern with the focus shift from the home design to the community design? Are there concerns with the revised residential design review standards? We do plan on bringing the text amendment to you in August. So we're hoping to get any questions, concerns you have, so we can get to work and hopefully bring you a successful zoning ordinance amendment in August. So that concludes my presentation.
You did a nice presentation. Let's hear some response from the council. Yes, Councilwoman, Joe, if you don't mind me calling your name.
You know, I appreciate the presentation. A couple of things that kind of got my attention at the end, and I want to make sure we still have the high quality because we're in the forever business. So whoever gets built out there. So whatever gets built out there, we're going to see forever. So the quality is important. And if you go to the smaller lots, you know, I really like uniqueness and at least some diversity of some product, where if you go to the smaller lots, I like what you did with the pavers on one of your examples, where you just don't see a row and row of concrete in the front. Not only that, in this weather, especially what's going on right now, that gets kind of hot. So you want to break up some of that, and, and one of the things that really, and I know the market's going to drive this, if they build a product that the, that the public doesn't want, it's not going to sell. So I know, I'm very familiar that the market's got to drive it, but at the same token, like a little diversity and uniqueness, as you're going down the street, you don't have to tell somebody, it's the sign in the front yard, "It's my house," because they all look the same. So as long you keep some of that uniqueness, and kind of break it up a little bit, and again, I always like to refer to Verado, because I thought they've done a good job with their small lots, on how they break that up, so those homes have some individuality to them, than just all look the same. But I think flexibility is important, I think the process, time is money to these guys. So anything you can get some things that they can count on, I know that's going to help you move it. But the same token, we want to maintain the quality and the uniqueness of our neighborhoods. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe, some good points. Sherry?
Thank you both. You clearly put a lot of work in this, and I think it's really important. The book from 1983 is not what's selling in 2000 and almost 20, so I really do appreciate this, I think it was needed. I have to echo a lot of Joe's comments. I, and I've said this over and over again, I understand the market's going to the smaller lots, and I think that there's a reason for that, and, and when you look at areas like where I live in Estrella, you know, you don't have as many opportunities for court homes or anything, so I'm hoping that will be added, because there are residents who may want to someday have a smaller product and stay in a beautiful neighborhood. So I really, I really like those options that we're giving our builders. One concern has always been, you know, the rose of two-story houses over and over again. And I think when you see that in a community where it's not well-done, is what people think of, then you kind of think of a cavern. But when you show people what you can do with two-story houses next to each other, and it gives like the agritopia, and it gives it a beautiful community, what you can do to dress up it, it's okay to have several two stories. I think what we always didn't like was the fact, sometimes it gives that almost like a cavern, a tunnel feel, because they're all just flat boxes. But that's not what you're seeing here, and I think I would really like that, because it does also build our density that we're looking for. I, I like the amenities, let's work with our builders and our developers to get different things in here that people are going to want and come to Goodyear. Because although I would love the blue house and the yellow house, I see what, you know, what he's saying, that we're not quite to that point yet. I've always liked kind of the little funky architecture, something a little bit different, and more court homes and more density. So I, I think the quality is here, and I think you've made it so much easier for people to follow it. I appreciate that you continue to streamline. Because if I had to look at that book, you know, you just might be like, "Do I want to build in Goodyear, or do I want to build something?" You know, when you look at that. So I do appreciate that and all the hard work. And I look forward to getting this done, because I think it's great, and I really like that orange thing. If Nathan's around here, you know that orange, for our park.
Next? Bill?
I'll be a minute.
I just...
I'm sure, I saw your paper.
I do like the idea, the whole streamlined process, and I agree, you know, wholeheartedly with Sherry and Joe, I think it's been, I think it's been awesome. Has the planning and zoning seen this?
No, they have not yet.
Will they?
Yes.
Okay. For me, I, I will rely heavily on P&amp;Z. That's their bread and butter. And, and I'd really be curious what, what their feedback is. I leaned over to Joe, and I said, "Man, those 45 and 5, that's, those are tight, but I'm not buying the house." So if that's what it is, that's what it is. I won't buy there, but, you know, the market is what the market is. So I'm glad we're, we're flexing to that and, and getting to it, so, thanks.
Next? Raynard?
Yeah, I like the ability to make it more flexible for the developer to come in and have options to, to build different products, so. And just as long as they don't lose a basic level of quality into our, that we're so flexible that we lose, I guess, what we, the standard that we've already set in, in Goodyear, so. And then, I think it's great to revise the standards and make it more flexible, so just as long as we're, like I said, just not losing the quality and the character of the community, and, yeah, that when you come to Goodyear, you're still, you're still knowing that you're, you're in a, in Goodyear.
Good. Molly?
Thank you, Katie. As long as I've been on this council, I have said I want more color. I just finished a road trip, 1,700 miles, and I went through city after city after city, that had two-story houses in rows, different colors, different facades, different courtyards. They were gorgeous. I've seen agritopia, and I love it. Eastmark is beautiful. Everyone loves Verado, because it's a different feel. But Goodyear has room for all of this, especially in the west part of Goodyear. And I know you don't like me to say this, but if you drive through Levine, you feel like you're in Goodyear. We're all the same color, we have all the same vegetation, we have all the same streets. It's just, and I live in a master planned community that I looked at and fell in love with, but after 17 and a half years in it, we all have cookie cutter houses, we're all the same, with the same tile roof, and we can't change it, because our HOA will not let us change our colors. They pick the colors for us. And I just think the families that are starting out, building their homes, want a choice. And I think it would behoove us to give them that choice, because a builder is not going to build something that won't sell. They're not going to come in with a weird prototype that they do not feel they're going to make their money in. And I'm just real excited that you're open to even talk about this and bring it back. And I know, I know, I understand, people that have lived here all their life, they want it to look good, and they want us to keep with the desert colors, and, and I do too, to a certain extent. But, I mean, even driving around to our, on our, on Bullard and on Pebble Creek Parkway and on Litchfield Road, we have put in so much vegetation, we can't see what businesses are there, they're all the same color, you don't even know what's there. And I just think, if we're going to be a vibrant community, we're going to need a vibrant area, whether it's our entertainment district, or whether it's a new agritopia off in West Goodyear. But we're going to need something different to attract. And I love the smaller lots, because a lot of people don't want big lots anymore. And they don't mind being close to their neighbors, because you know, in Arizona, you drive into your garage and shut the door and go inside, and you don't even see your neighbors, because it's too hot. But I love the porches, and I love the courtyards, and I think if we had more homes that had that, there would be more community-minded. My, my community has no courtyards, it has no front yards, really. I mean, we go in our garage, shut the door, and all of our activities is in the back of the house. So I just think having a front porch or a wraparound is really a wonderful thing for a family to have, and I think it's a lot of fun, so. And thank you for streamlining your products. We're getting our name out on how easy, well, I wouldn't, I don't want to say easy, because I don't want to infer we're really easy, but how cooperative we are to do business with, and how we want to help the builder succeed and get these homes done. But I just think we need to be a little bit more open. I mean, we're talking about generations to come, and if we stay, I think, unwilling to try something different, we're always going to look the same. And, and we may get passed by, and I don't want us to do that, especially with people like Fulton Homes coming in the picture. We're delighted to have them. So thank you, Katie, and thank you, Alex, for writing all the regulations and making all the phone calls.
Joanne?
Thank you. Okay, well...
That worried me.
So, no, no, it shouldn't. My heart has palpitations, I'll tell you that. You know, from, truly, six years on P&amp;Z, 10 years on this council, when I read the, your presentation, when I heard what you were saying, so many of these items have gone, done a complete 180, from what I have been taught, told, convinced, for so many years. And, and to tell you, and I have been saying this for the last, whatever you said, 34 out of 39, you know, items that have come to us in PAD form, and we've had to change things. And the fact that we're being flexible, and to change and to need and to desire, is important. And, and to Wally's point, you know, we are looking at generations ahead, and we do have to have that ability. Some of the things, you know, I read and I had to stop and say, "Oh my God, the all-two-story homes." You know, there was a day that really, I think, where, where that stands out as, as somebody might say is an ugly product, when it's all two-story homes, is when there's nothing developed around it. It's sitting out there...
The front elevations.
By itself. No, there's nothing else around it, and all of a sudden, it's like, "Why would somebody do that?" You know, there's, there's a point of where that product fits. And, and density and surrounding character and around it is, would make sense with it. I think that a positive of saying, you know, previously-approved designs are okay, don't stop the process, I totally agree with you. I, I think that's, that's important. I, I think the two-story example has a place. It's not my favorite, but it has a place. When you said about having sidewalks on only one side of the street, another one, burned into my head. Oh, no. No, never do that. But then the example totally makes sense. And if I'm, and if that's Palmyra, that's directly behind me in my own community, I totally understand. And, and so there are places that we need to be flexible with that. Your conventional neighborhood, yes. Sidewalks on each side makes, you know, complete sense. Back to what I have been saying, I'm sorry, one other thing, we were always told PADs were the items that gave us that creativity, that allowed that openness to let a developer develop, and that's what we were always told. Don't keep it in this certain kind of residential, whatever number you want to call it, make it a PAD, that way it lends to creativity. So now we're saying differently, so that's something I'm having to overcome. People have always known, and I've heard it for over 21 years in this city, when people come to Goodyear, they know they're in Goodyear, and are not, they're not in city XYZ. I don't ever want to lose that quality and that appearance, that you know you are in Goodyear. We can be flexible, but you still know that you're in Goodyear. The, the design guidelines, I, I have felt good that we've structured that, that regardless of how we open these other things, we still say, "These are design guidelines, and this is what should be looked at." Now, you are taking a few things away from it by saying two stories. I mean, there's, there's going to be some, some situations, and I understand, so that's why you have the different new three product categories, whatever you want to call it. Okay. One of my key concerns, and I said it the last couple of times, those changes came to us in a neighborhood. Fine with smaller lots, great with having streetscape, great with community feel, extremely important, open space, connectivity. But back to the mom, and I'm certainly a vocal mother, is we'll say, "I don't have enough room for my kids to play, so how close..." Back to Gary Gelsner's favorite word, "curved linear streets," back to, "How's the design of that area made?" If, if the kids are out playing, how close are they to that pocket park, to that amenity, that a parent's going to feel, like, "We want healthy children, my kids can go outside and play," but they're this, you know, each home actually is a certain distance from an open space, you know? Or there's a cul-de-sac, that there's not the traffic. I mean, those are going to be important things to families. And, and I will, and I will still, you know, harp about that. I see Pete being out there. Pete? I really appreciate, you know, Newland, you know, you, you guys have been great partners, and I actually said that the other night, I was, it was a Republican Club up in Estrella that I was the speaker for, and I said, "Hey, you know, we have these two new fire stations coming." Thank you to Newland for being our partner, and, and it's very true, so I appreciate that. A lot of things are good, but safety, open space, quality cannot be second nature. They still have to be top for us. I'm proud of you guys for the things that you've been doing to streamline everything. I think that's outstanding. We know that we have been wanting to convince developers that we're developer-friendly, and that's, that's awesome. One other thing that, that I, we never hear about, and I, I'm kind of torn on, because I also hear good and bad things about it, but back to these kinds of smaller communities, dog parks or dog runs, they never seem to be part of the conversation. I hear some developers say, "Oh, we don't want them." I hear others say, "Oh, we got to have them," so I really don't know where they land. But when you're talking about some people's kids or their furry pets, so I just leave it at that. Because I think I, I think I hit all my, I did say, I did write down, "How do we get the unique orange monster? How do we..."
I like that.
Yeah.
Pete?
Because that was, that was really cool. And sidewalks both sides. Now, I think, I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Yes, Sherry? You know, your mom quote actually brought up something that I remember reading somewhere, that ASU did a study about five years ago, or maybe longer, that said one thing, this is kind of a hard problem, because we're in a different age now with water, that brings people out is front porches and grass yards. Because I remember as a kid, you'd play out in the front yard, you wouldn't go to the park, you played in the front yard, you played kick the can, you ran around everyone's yard, because, you know, you just ran around. I don't know if that's something with smaller lots we can look into, is making an option when you add the porches, because that is one thing they said that actually brings people together, is when you have the porches and the grass. Kids, as a mom, don't want to play in rocks with cactus. I mean, that, that was one of my disappointments buying the house, was I could not have grass in my front yard. And I know we're in a water issue, and, and things have changed, but there are low water, there's also fake grass, and there's other alternatives that, that bring people out to the front. And I don't, I think that's one thing that, like what Wally was saying, when you have the garage, there's no reason to go sit out with the hot coming off all the rocks. So I don't know if that's something we can think about or look into.
Any other comments? Well, thank you, ladies. I think you're right on, right on the goal that we need to be. I want to give credit to the consortium, because I think this is all bringing this together, and we have such cooperation between Act Dev and Development Services and Engineering. I think that has helped us get where we are today. I admire Nate Nathan, I've had many conversations with him, and I, I trust him. I, I trust his recommendations, but moreover, we have seen these all over the valley. And there's nothing better when you say a little front porch, or, you know, a little bit of grass. Really, what these areas are doing is they're making it, in German, there's a word called gemütlich. Gemütlich, yeah, and it's sort of, kind of close together, and your elbow, you're, you're touching each other's elbow, and you come into a house, and you're all of a sudden feeling like you're back home, you get this feeling, "Oh, I love this, I want to sit in this room." The same way with the neighborhood. You want to drive down the street, and you want to see a, a home, you get these feelings, they come back from your childhood, how people used to live with front porches, and they childhood, how people used to live with front porches, and they talked to each other. And so we've gotten away from, we, we, the cities have actually divided people, and we talk about people being able to have conversations and settle, settle arguments and settle everything, well, we've got, we've got barriers, so they're, they're not able to do this. So all these small home sites, and by the way, these are homes, not products, okay? I was in the business, so I don't say product, I say home. So when we're thinking about this, that's what we want to think about, we want to think, okay, we're not just putting up a building in Goodyear, we're building a home for a family. And when we think of that, then all these little components we're talking about, all the little extras, so I think that's, that's what we want to be. You know how we always talk about, oh, Goodyear's grown, we still have that hometown feeling? Well, the way we'll keep that is that we make those neighborhoods look like hometown, and people feel that. And if there's anything I miss in my home from Virginia, it was a front porch.
Oh, me too.
I would go out there in the morning with my coffee and the paper, and I'd be nosy, watching everybody walk down the street, you know, you'd say hi to people. In the afternoon, it was hot, I went back in my deck and had a cocktail and enjoyed it back there. So, I mean, it's just one of those, you just have that feeling, and everybody said hello to each other, and you learn someone's name, we don't do that in Goodyear. So I think less walls in some areas, I love the way you're, the pavers and the different items in there. The one thing that with a single, with a double-story home, if there aren't any amenities on the front of it, the, when I saw, we call them elevations, you had three choices to make, and when you make choices with a plain front, and not anything that makes it different, and you have three in a row, you're looking like, oh, my God, there's three-story homes there, and they're boring. And so I think those are the things that will make it a difference, but I'm just a hundred percent for this, I'm really excited about it. And you talk about density, this is where you're going to get density, you're going to attract people, because there's going to be affordability in some of these homes, because of less land, and that adds to what we've been striving for. So one thing that I think we need to do, and Newland, this is part of that, you need to educate the public, because the first thing the neighbors are going to say is, the value of my home is deteriorating. They're bringing small homes in, that's going to affect the price of my home. Okay, so we have to educate the public on this, and put articles out, and, and be cheerleaders of it all, all right? And I think that that will help the public, and bring the public in on it, and grow the value in their minds, so. But, great job, thanks so much. I did finish, you didn't have another slide, did you? All right, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and we really are supposed to start at six, so is it right on six, I have to start, or can I give them five extra minutes? Okay, let, let's say we're going to start this at six-ten, okay? Meeting adjourned.